Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the first of two information sessions to be presented about the July 18th vote here in Vernon. We'll introduce the school board, first starting with school board chair Mike Heber, as well as Sandy Morrison and Carrie Adonan. We'll have the school board give a brief presentation about the reasoning for scheduling the vote, and then we'll take questions from the office. Mr. Heber.
First of all, I'd like to let you know there's two other members on the board, Walter Brough and Deb Heber. Deb is recovering from surgery and Walter's out of town. That's why they're not here this evening. So having said that, we're here to discuss the vote on July 18th for Vernon to remove itself from the UHS No. 6 district. The history behind that is Act 46 came into place, and when it came into play, one of the questions that was asked in my paper was, can a district with school choice coexist with districts that do not pay tuition? And the answer to that was no, it would be unconstitutional. So that created a large problem for a great number of districts throughout the state. So people started scrambling looking for ways to address that. The way that I addressed it was based on the recommendation of the lady that drafted Act 46, Donna Russo Savage. She said the best thing that Vernon could do would be withdraw from UHS No. 6 and then proceed from that point forward. And now she is the lead counsel for the Agency of Education. I worked very closely with her last year crafting the piece that allows Vernon to vote on its own, to remove itself from the high school union. And the reason we did that was, as you know, there were a couple of votes, and the other towns would have voted to allow us out, with the exception of Dummerston. And for people that think that my piece of legislation was a surprise, it was not a We were very clear that we wanted to be out of the district, and Dummerston was also very clear that they were not going to let us out of the district because one person from Dummerston said they were going to use us as a pawn to kill the merger. Our position has never been to kill a merger, it's to allow a merger to go forward. And we discussed that with the other towns, with the Act 46 committee, and they cooperated with us and understood what we were trying to do. And that is the point of the piece of legislation that I got passed that allows us to vote ourselves out, and the other towns support that by and large. And again, that's on the recommendation of the Agency of Ed and working closely with the state Board of Ed, as well as the legislatures, two committees on education, the Senate and House. So we all worked together and said, what would be a viable solution for Vernon? The other thing that is in that piece of legislation, which I think people miss because what we're doing kind of stands out, is one of the things that we've discussed at great length and what I kept requesting was that the side-by-sides be broader. Because initially, a side-by-side is a district that can coexist with a new entity. So less side-by-side. Well, it had to be two or more districts to make it side-by-side. Under the new legislation, one district could do that. So what would be our intention here would be that we have a successful vote to remove ourselves from the high school union, and then when the other towns resolve whether it's going to be the merger that they're looking at under Act 46, if it's some other alternative structure, whatever the new entity is, we would then petition to be a side-by-side to that. So Vernon would be under the umbrella of the new entity. So the things that people are concerned with, our teachers concerned about representation, they would belong to the same bargaining unit, nothing would change them. Very little would change structurally for Vernon. The thing that would happen is we would ensure that we keep school choice, we would have control of our own building, we would have control of our capital plan, the rec department would still be here. So there are some things that are very positive. But people have commented that it can't all be positive, and that is true, there are potential issues. Some of them Carrie researched and found three major points of contention, but we're not sure they would occur because we don't know what the new entity is going to be. But Carrie, if you'd like to mention them?
Sure. So if a merger were to go through, so I'll try to be very careful with my words, if a merger were to go through with Brattleboro, Putney, Dummerston, and Guilford, we could lose out on joining a universal meals program. So right now Vernon on its own is not eligible for free breakfast and lunch. But if we were to merge and the merger were to go through, there is a chance that we could have free breakfast and lunch for all of our students. So that is something that we might be losing out on by not merging. As the articles of agreement currently stand, that's the articles that the Act 46 Study Committee is working on, there is a mention of possible intra-school choice. So let's say you were a teacher up in Putney, but you work here in Vernon, or live here in Vernon, you could be able to take your child, bring them to Putney, and have them educated there. Again, these are the current articles of agreement, so they're not finalized, but it is something that could be available. And then finally, similar to what's been done recently through the central office with transportation, food service, collective bargaining, and special education, a merger might allow us to have more flexibility with our staff. So right now, let's say we wanted to offer French lessons to everyone. We as Vernon would need to hire a full-time teacher, which might be cost prohibitive for us. But if we were to merge and there was a French teacher who had time in their schedule, we might be able to bring that teacher down here for one or two days a week at a reduced cost. So those are three things that we might be losing out on by not joining a merger. They're not all for sure, but they are something that maybe we should talk about and you might want to think about when you make your vote.
But the one thing to remember now is, under the new rules under Act 49, where we've changed the side-by-side situation, those negative things, if we become a side-by-side to a new district, we keep what we have, but we're under that umbrella, so we would be eligible for the things that Carrie just mentioned. So there's less downside now for Vernon removing itself, because the plan would be to vote ourselves out of the high school union and then petition to be a side-by-side where we would maintain our autonomy, but still be under that umbrella. So we would have our own building, our own school board, we'd own our property. But those other shared things, we could participate in because we would be a side-by-side. The one thing I'm not sure of on a side-by-side is, we might not, because we've left the high school board, we might not have a representative on the high school board. That would be like Dover or anyone else that tuitions their kids to Brattleboro, they don't have a member on the board. The other thing to bear in mind is that when the analysis was done by Frank Rucker, the finance director for the WSASU, he found there to be no potential negative impacts to any of the other communities by our extracting ourselves, nor were there negative impacts to Vernon. And in fact, if you think about it, the one financial change that would occur, we would be paying tuition rather than assessment. And tuition is less than assessment. So we would see the cost of a student going to Brattleboro be slightly reduced. So there's a lot of moving parts here, and I know people have a lot of concerns. I wish we had more people here because we'd like to hear the questions and address them so people know exactly what's going on. I know people felt our flyer was all pro getting out, but as Carrie alluded to, we don't know what's going to happen with the other four towns, so we don't know what there is to lose or what there is to gain, because there's no merger, there's nothing that's happened yet. At this point, if you want to ask questions, that would be great.
Okay, we'll take questions from people. Go ahead.
And Akusenin, is there anything in Act 49 to prohibit us from being a side-by-school?
No.
So as long as the other school district agreed to be a side-by?
What happens is, if we're voted out, our board has a bit of work to do, because we have to immediately establish an educational plan and submit it to the agency. We've been working very closely with the supervisor union, and I'm a little remiss here, I'm sorry. We have our new superintendent here, I must apologize for not introducing her, Lyle Holliday. Ron Staley has retired, but she's been involved in the conversations for several months. But Ron had worked closely with us with a plan to what we want to do. So the other towns would have no reason to reject us, but also, it's not certain they have the authority to reject us, because the agency or the Board of Ed will assign you, if you haven't joined some sort of district, they will assign you at some point. It would make no sense whatsoever to not allow us to be a side-by-side. And other towns now in the state have done it in Rockdale, and there's a number of towns now have utilized the new side-by-side and have successfully moved forward with mergers, because now there's not the resistance, because you're not losing those things that you hold near and dear.
Jim, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Sorry. So if a merger in Brattleboro, Putney, Guilford, and Dummerston goes forward, Vernon then applies to the state to become a side-by-side?
Yes.
Okay.
We submit an educational plan to the agency and the Board of Education that we indeed want to be a side-by-side to the new entity. Whatever the new entity is, it could be what is proposed in the Act 46 merger, it could be an alternative structure, or if they petition and decided, we want to try and stay as a supervisor union, which is not likely that would happen, but it could. So you have all those potentials. But for Vernon, the bottom line is, if we want to have autonomy and have school choice and be what Vernon is presently, we need to remove ourselves from the union high school district to have that freedom. And that also allows us the freedom to rejoin at a different status. We'll no longer be a member district as we are right now. So we would not have the issue of being a tuitioning district in membership with a non-tuitioning district. We would be a separate district. So you would essentially have, that umbrella would have two districts under, the four towns together and Ron.
Okay, question right over here.
I guess I'm a little perplexed about the side-by-side and the Act 49. I'm not sure what that even means. Or is it that big of an advantage to Vernon to pull out of the supervisor union?
I believe it is because of what is potentially there. You know, I know philosophically, people may or may not agree with school choice. I'm a very strong school choice proponent, I'll tell anyone that. I've had my children and grandchildren take advantage of it, some of them have gone to Brattleboro, some have gone to Pioneer, and it's wherever they meet success. And to me, that's what school choice is good for, is the student goes where they're best served. Why it's important, what happened was, the original Act 46, which originally designed was, they had this structure where you could have a side-by-side district, which was defined as two like districts. So if there were another district, say Dummerston did not have a middle school, and they had school choice for high school and middle school, we could have joined with Dummerston as a side-by-side to the other three towns. But that's very limiting, because there are a lot of towns in Vernon's situation that there's no like town. We have no like town. The closest town to us that is a like town is Dover. That would be an interesting district. I would not want to be in Lyle. Tonight you're in Dover, tomorrow you're in Marlboro, and then, oh by the way, go to North Bennington. You know, so like districts are very difficult. So what happened was, they addressed it through the side-by-sides. And now you can have a single district be a side-by-side. So because we are unique to the other four towns, we have school choice and we have some other things the other towns don't, we fit into the category where we could petition to be a side-by-side. And again, once we were a side-by-side, we would go back to, it's very wonky, because essentially, you're in that supervisor union, but you're a separate district within the supervisor union. As we are right now, we have a supervisor union with five separate districts. They're going to bring them together and be one. Well, it would be a new supervisor union, new unified district, whatever they're going to call it, but it would have two districts within it. One district that tuitions, and the other districts that do not. And that would meet the muster for the constitutionality, and for Vernon, there would be no changes. But again, one of the concerns that I hear is for our staff, have to bear in mind, regardless of what we do, the staff will be in the same bargaining unit. They're not going to have changes in their work conditions or anything like that. They are not going to all of a sudden be cast aside. That's why I had one person ask me that, they understood that a couple of staff members left because they were distressed about what was going on and what would happen. And I felt bad about that, because there's really no reason for them to leave at this point. One, we don't know what's going to be in the future, but two, there's no change for the staff. Things are going to remain the same for the staff, whether we contract, whether we're a side-by-side, it's all the same to them, because it makes no sense to try and hook up with a Dover or something.
Now, I'll give you, I'll allow you one follow-up and then we'll move on.
Okay. Now, you're saying are being a separate entity, a side-by-side? Are we still, are we going to provide our own transportation, get our own buses, things of that nature, or is that still kind of?
No, as a side-by-side, the board would do what it does now. We determined, we had our own buses, we determined we would go in with the district plan. We would be able to do that again. The things that Carrie talked about, sharing things, we could do those things, because we would be under the umbrella of that new entity. Separate district for the purposes of tuition paying, but in all other aspects, Lyle would be our superintendent, Frank Rucker would be our finance director. There would be almost no recognizable change for Vernon between what we are now and what we would be then. It would just be that we would ensure that we maintain this 50-plus-year history of school choice and the benefits that come with it. One of the benefits being, the folks that I'm closing on my house with on the 21st of this month bought my house because we have school choice. They have four kids and they thought, great, Vernon's got school choice, I want to live in Vernon. And if you talk to realtors, that's a big selling point for Vernon. It's one of the few selling points we have left. That and our rec department sells in this town. That's what sells the town. So it's important.
Back of the room.
I'm glad you mentioned the rec department, because that really kind of leads into my next question. Right now, we charge the rec department rent, and that goes to the bottom line to bring down the cost of our statewide, our property taxes for our school. And the town has supported it because they see a savings at the end. At the bottom line, there's a savings because we do that. If we enter into this proposal, we no longer have the opportunity to do that, right? So that means that not only puts school choice at risk, but it also puts our rec department at risk if we're asking the taxpayers to support the rec department.
Exactly. And that's one of the things, when I said, the traditional things that we enjoy here that other towns own. What would happen, the rec could still rent here, but the money would not come to our district, it would go to the broader, the broader group. The same as our capital plan, while the intention would be that our capital plan would be designated for Vernon, if those funds were needed, they could vote to take funds. So those are the types of things that we're looking, it's not just school choice, there's a whole wide range of issues here, that having our town have autonomy is very important.
Okay, second row.
So in addition to, I think we need to discuss what the advantages are. You know, school choice is one, the rec department rental money is another, but what are the other big advantages to withdrawing from the union? I think that's, all we seem to hear about is school choice. So let's elaborate, and so, I mean, I'm feeling pretty good about this, but I think they're not going to watch.
Well, I think, you know, school choice was the trigger. When it came out that it's going to be unconstitutional for schools to have school choice in the larger districts, there were 86 towns and the state went, what? Because there are 86 towns that traditionally had school choice, and it created somewhat of a panic in all those towns. So that was the main rallying point initially, but then as the merger talks went along, and if you follow the Act 46 issues, you know, the new unified district would own all the property that the town has for the school. Your staff could be reassigned throughout the new entity. The rec department is another one. What we see as traditional here in Vernon is, you know, the culture of the town itself. And that's one of the things I'm concerned when you have these bigger mergers, it's not just Vernon. But culturally, towns are different. You move to a town because of the culture of the town. So under this plan, we would maintain that culture, we would maintain that autonomy. The bigger question is, what is the risk to Vernon to withdraw? And now that we have this possibility to be a side-by-side, the risk is de minimis. There's almost no risk to Vernon whatsoever, because if things pan out the way the law will now allow, if we have a successful vote out of the district, we turn around and then say, okay, now we want to be a side-by-side. We stay autonomous, but we enjoy the benefits that we presently have belonging to the supervisor union.
Tell you what, I'll allow you a follow-up then, the lady in the front row.
What is the difference between, and maybe this is not a moot, this is a moot point now that we have Act 49, is what's the difference between us being a side-by-each district and contracting services? Is that two separate things?
It is very, it is very much so, because to contract the services, we would have to negotiate every item that we receive now. We get a lot of benefit belonging to the broader district with special ed. That is a huge thing. Well, we would have to contract for those services. And if you wanted to do something, as Carrie talked about, with a foreign language, and you wanted to share resources, you would have to contract with it. You would no longer be, have rights and benefits of membership. You're contracting, just like you get somebody to come to your house and do work, you're contracting for that work. Well, if we are a side-by-side, we maintain the rights and benefits of being a member of that broader district. And that's the big difference. Under a contract, right now, with the other towns, and with Ron, and with Lyle, there was never any problem with a contract. But that doesn't mean two years down the road, somebody doesn't say, you know what? We think you should pay this. Much better off if you can work up a situation where you're a member. That's why Donna Russo Savage said, the best thing for Vernon to do is this approach. And that was the recommendation we got from, then she was in charge of education and led your council, but now she's the chief attorney for the Agency of Education. And when I was doing this through the legislature, she walked me through it with the committees and went and testified in front of the committee, this is the thing that is best for Vernon to do. This is in their students' and their citizens' best interest. And this was the chief attorney for the Agency of Education speaking to the education committee. So I would take that as a very strong recommendation. If the Agency of Ed's chief attorney is saying, this is in Vernon's best interest to do this, I think that's a pretty strong endorsement of what we're trying to do.
All right, front row.
I had two questions. This one is, how many students actually use school choice? And the second question is, if we own the building and we are a side-by-side, who is responsible for the repair costs for the building?
That would be us.
Do we pay them now, or do we share them now?
We pay them now.
Can I just say that, to me, that's one of the advantages, is that we would, we've taken really good care of the school over the years, the maintenance of the school has been a priority. And if we joined, if we were part of the unified district, we would be helping, are responsible to share the expenses to maintain the other schools, and some of them have not been maintained in the same fashion that Vernon has, so it could cost us more. So that's, I think, another advantage, is that we can maintain that priority and oversee that expense through our budget. And making our budget is another advantage. You asked about advantages. I mean, when we became part of the Lunam Southeast Supervisor Union, we have given up a lot of control over many things. There still are a few that we can control, and the bottom line for the budget is something where we can reflect our priorities. And if we were part of the unified district, we would be, we would have one member on a nine-member board, one member from Vernon, that would be making the decisions about what's done at our school, you know, what the budget would be, or whatever the decisions are to run the school, they would own it. So that's, that's.
It would be like Lunam Solid Waste, that Brattleboro controlled, and it didn't matter what the member towns wanted, Jamaica, Nunfane, Dummerston.
It's just.
We wanted the roll-offs.
That is, that is a potential.
And all of us were overrun by Brattleboro.
And another issue with building ownership, if you think about this, historically, what's occurred here in this building, when Eric was killed by the train, we had his memorial service here, we've had weddings here, we've had funerals here, special events here. If a town resident wants to have a special event in his building, it is a town community building, you can have it, as long as it's not a for-profit enterprise, residents can utilize this building. They apply to the school board, they apply to the maintenance department and make the arrangements, and they use the building. If you look at other schools, if you want to utilize the building, there's a fee. So it's those little things that you don't really notice until they're gone, but that's important. I mean, the community came together here for that memorial service, it was important to the town. That's, that's the cultural thing that you risk. And again, that risk is vastly minimized, because with the new side-by-side issue, we get the benefits of membership and we remain autonomous.
There's one over there.
By us going out on our own, will that change how the state determines how much we pay for our taxes to the state, our school taxes?
No.
An equalized student count would stay the same.
That, your statewide property tax would stay basically the same. The one risk with joining the broader group, and you mentioned taxes, is one of the things that's going to need to happen is, down the road, you're going to have to have one tax rate for all the towns, for equity, and you're also going to have to have a common level appraisal, which can get pretty costly. So there are some, there are some risks to joining, because those things could occur, but your tax base would not be based upon belonging or not belonging. And again, with the side-by-side situation, we would be in the broader district.
Any other questions? You had one, and then I'll go to you. And then, actually, wait a minute, lady in the back row hasn't had a chance. Why don't you go ahead, ma'am?
I have a few questions.
You're welcome. You can be ma'am.
It's a matter of respect. It doesn't matter if you're a ma'am.
So I have some specific questions about, I guess, the use of Lyle and the services within WSASU. So will the teachers still be able to have professional developments through the district?
Yes.
Will they still be able to, when it comes to special ed? Will those special ed teachers have to evaluate themselves, or will they still be able to use the evaluation team of the district?
That would be the evaluation team of the district.
And would they have to contract out and pay, or would it be the same as it is now?
Under the old model, it would have been that contract model, but with the new ability to do a side-by-side, they would be, we would be under the umbrella of the supervisor union. Lyle would be our superintendent, the special ed director would be our special ed director. All those things would remain the same. That's why I say for teachers to be worried about things changing, those things are not going to change. We will be back as part of the new unified district, but we will be a separate district within that unified district. But all those things you're asking would not be contracted, not be lost, those services would be available to Vernon. If we struck out on our own and said we want to be totally free from anyone, first of all, in 2019, we couldn't do it any longer. But if we were to do that, it would be very cost prohibitive, because we would have to establish all those things ourselves. So I can understand people asking those questions and being concerned about that, because that could get pretty pricey. But there are now mechanisms by which we avoid that, and that is the withdraw and then be a side-by-side.
And so that goes as well for the step behavior program, these kids that are getting this, this support for their behavior as long as, and those children who are getting those one-on-one pairs for special education and special needs. one-on-one pairs for special education and special needs.
Right. Unless the Supervisor Union, the new entity, made some structural change that impacted everyone, those things would not change. I can't say that, you know, 10 years from now, that's going to be the same, because you don't know what the district's going to do. But as it stands right now, with the facts that we know, if we withdraw, become a side-by-side, all those things remain as they are, unless there's a broader change within the group.
And you did not answer the lady in the front's question about the percentage of children who are using the school choice.
I'm not certain of the exact number.
I think it's 43, which is 13%. If I did my math correctly.
We've run from 0% to a maximum of 30%. It usually percolates around 20% of our students go elsewhere, which actually kind of fits in with the national standard. If you look at studies, they've shown nationally, every school has about 20% of their student population is not served by that school. It's not a statement about the school.
I have a friend whose child was much better served at Compass School. And because Vernon had school choice, that child was able to go to Compass, it was not succeeding here in Vernon, no matter what they did to help the child. And once a child went to Compass School, where there was more one-on-one with that child every day, that child blossomed at that school. So, I mean, school choice isn't just going to Pioneer.
Oh, no, no. There's a broad number of success stories. We have a kid that was in town here, is a plumber, he's in Summers, Connecticut or something else, he's a master plumber, anyway. He went to Franklin County, because Franklin County had a plumbing program. So, with our school choice, he went there, and quite frankly, if I'm spending $15,000, $17,000 for kid education, I don't care particularly where they're going. What I care about is that child's needs being served. And if my elder daughter, much better off at Pioneer. Younger one, go anywhere, no problem. My grandchildren, same thing. My elder granddaughter, Ari, went to Pioneer for a couple of years, decided, for whatever reason, she loved German, I have no idea why, they didn't offer it there, so she went to Bratton. But between her and her parents, they make the decision of what's in the best interest for their child's educational opportunities. And I think, as a society, that's our obligation, is to educate our kids to the highest level that we possibly can. And I personally think that with school choice, that occurs. I like the idea of school choice within the district. I think, you know, there are kids that would come to Vernon for our arts program from Bratton. I've had people ask, could we come and do that? As the same thing, there are people here in Vernon that, if they had the opportunity, would send a kid to academy and take a foreign language. So, I think that's a very positive move for the district, to look at that direction. But for the middle and high school level, we already had that opportunity. And I want to make sure that our parents can make the choices in their children's best interest. One of the questions that came up was, could this change how many kids go to Bratton? Historically, there's no reason to think it would, because for the last 50 years, 80% of our kids go to Bratton. I could understand the angst if suddenly a district that had no school choice was going to say, now we're going to have school choice. You might see 20% leave Bratton, because they'd never had it before. We did some research with the Supervisor Union. There's no reason to anticipate that people's patterns of sending their students different places would change. So, we looked at probably sending the same 80% to Bratton. And one of the other advantages with having school choice in general is that we're selling houses because we have school choice. What is the one thing that's going on in Vernon that is not going on in most of the rest of the state? Our student population is going up. Everyone else talks about declining enrollments. Ours is ticking up slowly, but it's going up. At one time, we had, when we put the addition on here, we were looking at having 310 students, that's why we put the addition on. We got down to 125 students, and now we're at 165, something like that.
Hovers up there.
Yeah. And now for me, we've got four new kids moving into town, so the numbers could be better.
Okay, so, did you have another question?
I did. So, aren't we a little premature on even voting on this, if we're not, we don't have anything so-to-speak concrete to go by? Yeah, we can't figure in the what-ifs and the whatevers, but I think we should have something, a little more concrete before we make a decision with just, you know, this few people also. I mean, I think myself, I don't know what the difference is. I don't see a difference, other than, I, you know, I think everybody should have school choice. That's my thing, but...
That's an outstanding question. Because when you think about it, why are we doing this? Why are we doing this now? We're doing this now so the other four towns can do something. When Vernon said to the other four towns, "We don't want to give up what we have. We stepped back from the process." But we also said to them, "We don't want to stop you from doing what you desire to do. Go ahead and do what you want to do. They can't do what they want to do until we do something. So, we're voting now so that they can move forward. And if they move forward, whatever they develop, we will then petition to be part of that new development. But they need us to move forward first."
It's like we're going down a path, and we have to check off this before we can get to that.
But there's not enough information. I mean...
Well, and I wonder if, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, because I don't know all the dates, but there are certain timelines that have to be met. So, I believe the first one for all mergers is November 30th of this year. So, the Act 46 Study Committee actually has to have something finalized and put in front of the State Board in September, because the State Board has to react by November? Or they're reacting next year? Maybe this is a time for Lyle to give us a little timeline?
So, the rest of the four towns need to have the Articles of Agreement, they're called, to the State Board by September, so that they can be approved, or if there are edits that need to be done. Those can be completed, because the vote will need to be warned a certain number of days ahead of time. So, we've had to work backwards from the November date to ensure that we meet all the dates. As Sandy just said, we're checking off all the boxes, so that we're meeting the letter of the law. So, we have to have yours done, so that the Study Committee can move forward, so that they can get the Articles of Agreement to the state in September, the beginning of September.
So, but I'm saying, you know, how can we vote on something we don't know that much about, or am I totaling?
Well, I think the Act 46 Committee's been meeting for a long time, and those Articles of Agreement are what would take school choice from us, and all those other things. So, we're reacting to the articles that the Act...
That are...
Right. We're saying, no, we don't want to be a part of that. And for them to continue and finish that, we have to literally leave the process, so they can complete theirs.
They can complete theirs.
And once they complete theirs, then we can move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions to people?
Is there any risk of, if the WSCSU merger doesn't go through, like, we've withdrawn from the district, does that affect our side-by-each at all? I mean, what, I mean, does that put us in a bad spot?
No, because those other four towns, at some point, are going to have to have some sort of a unified district.
Because Deversen is definitely...
Because if they do not, what will happen in 2019, if there is no merger, there's no Unified District, there's nothing. The state will say, "We are assigning you to the Supervisor Union." They will create the Supervisor Union. That is why it's important for these other four towns to set up what they want, because it's much better to be at the head of the table than to be on the table. Quite honestly, that's what would happen, is 2019, the state would say, "Here's what you are. And it may not be anything that you want, but that's what you have." So, this is an opportunity for people to create an entity that they share goals, and they share desire to have that entity. And then, we come along and say, okay, we want to participate in all the benefits of that, but the other four towns have already recognized that we deserve our autonomy. That's what we desire. And they have worked very closely with us, the Act 46 Committee, everyone's worked very hard with us, the Agency of Ed, the Board of Ed, the Senate Ed Committee, the House Ed Committee, worked very hard with me and other people from Vernon to move this forward, and also with Ron Staley, because he went up and he helped testify that he agreed, this is beneficial to Vernon, this is the direction we should be heading in. So, all the misunderstandings out there are because there is a lot of uncertainty. The lady's question over here, well, we don't know what's going to happen. Absolutely. But nothing happens until we're out, and then everyone can move forward again in a partnership.
Any further questions, Penny? Sandy?
I'm curious about, this has all been a big learning curve for all of us. This law was passed, and we're trying to comply, so we're, and it changes. It's been changing, evolving. Luckily, Mike is in Montpelier and often has some answers to the change, to tell us the changes. But if the merger is... So, they have to have the articles to the State Board by September, so that they can then have a vote. And if they vote the merger down, then what would have to be done by November? How would they comply with that?
If they vote the merger down, they're done.
They're done?
They're done.
Well, what's that mean? Because they have to do something.
That means that it will be up to the State Board.
That will immediately put it before the State Board?
They can, like, individual towns have a deadline, and I, were you at that meeting where I think they said that they're loosely, it's supposed to be December, but if you don't get your plan in until January, it's probably okay, but individual towns could petition?
And that's where the conversation is with alternative districts. You have the movement to have alternative districts, and what would happen would be, if the merger was, because it's very controversial. A merger is not a set deal. There are a lot of very unhappy people with the merger. So, if it did not go through, what would then happen is, as Lyle said, the Act 46 Committee would have done its work. Now, the other towns would have to come together and come up with an alternative structure. If they don't come up with an alternative structure, the state will assign you. We will be submitting our plan as to what we want to do, and that would be, we voted ourselves out, we're developing a plan to be a side-by-side. So, whatever the state does with them, we're going to be a side-by-side. But you do what you want to them, we've got what we need. And that's really where we are, and I guess it's kind of a Vernon tradition. I mean, we've been in odds with the state for a long time, we're playing across the street, or, I mean, we're pretty strange, I guess, but, yeah, it's nothing new.
Is that the same thing that's happening with Wyndham School up at Alilin and Gray, where they have decided that they do not want to join? Are they going to be a side-by-side?
They're looking at some alternative structures.
Because the other towns are doing something together, but Vernon wants to stay.
They want to stay apart. They're going to be able to do that for short term, but then eventually, there will be no unaffiliated districts left in the state. They will be assigned somewhere. It may not be with Alilin Gray, maybe with someone else, but they will be assigned somewhere. And again, the success of the new side-by-sides, it's places like Proctor, Pittsburgh, some place up in Northeast Kingdom, they've been able to utilize the individual side-by-side to get their mergers done. If you recall, a couple of months ago, there was a flurry of, hey, look, we have a lot of successful mergers. Well, that was because they now had the opportunity to merge as an individual town.
With Act 49.
Yeah, with the new act.
Can I follow up on that question, Delilah? So, you just said something that I, before, earlier in the meeting, that I had never heard before. The Act 46 Committee is putting together the Articles of Agreement, which I thought they had already sent up to the State Board, but maybe that was a...
Not efficient, no. They sent it to the AOE for feedback.
Okay, for feedback. And you mentioned that they may end up just staying as a Supervisor Union?
That is, one of the suggestions of the last Act 46 meeting was, is it possible for us to stay as we are? And that could be the plan. My sense is that the Act 46 Committee would not, after all the work they put into putting together the Articles of Agreement, looking at merging, they would not send that plan, but that would be a possibility.
Just as a comment, I've always felt that the Supervisor Union did pretty much everything that they're trying to accomplish by forcing us into these merged Unified Districts, that there's been so much cooperation and working together, and the programs have been, you know, everything has really been pretty appropriate for satisfying the needs for this law, that it's a shame that it's caused such chaos. But even if they stayed a Supervisor Union, we would still need to be separate because of our school choice, because we can't have anything different like that, right? Yeah, okay.
We have a question over here.
So, am I understanding correctly, that if we are a side-by-side, we will, like, things are pretty much just staying the same? We have the same services, we have the same, we have the same everything at the same cost?
Pretty much.
Everything stays the same, as a side-by-side?
I'll never commit to the same cost, because costs always change, but as things exist now, that's how they will exist in the future. That was the intent of the Vernon Board from the beginning, was to be with our friends and neighbors, but also to have what we all year and dear, which is the ownership of our building, the pride in our building, the maintenance of the building, the rec department, the relationship with the town building. I mean, a lot of people don't realize this, but it's unusual for a select board and a school board to get along. And we've had a tradition of cooperation between the two boards for a great number of years. We have common goals, and the common goals are the best interests of our kids, the best interests of our citizens. And so, the boards have worked well together. And that's, those are some of the important things that we don't want to lose. But you're absolutely right, things would, you wouldn't notice anything.
And I think Mike said earlier that the rules in Act 49 changed what can constitute a side-by-side, because in the past, you had to have at least a certain number of schools with a certain number of students, so they were more restrictive than they are now. This is new, and I don't know all the intricacies of what a side-by-side could look like, but Mike's more into that.
In the back row.
Yeah, Mike, I'd just like to take a second to thank you. You've done an absolutely amazing job in Montpelier, and really got a lot passed specifically for Vernon. And, you know, to some people, school choice may not matter, but to others, it's a very important part of how they want to raise their children, number one. And number two, school choice, low taxes, and a good rec department are an amazing tool for reselling the homes in this community. And my fear, if we merge, is we're going to lose all of those. Because we talk a lot about school choice, but the rec department's a very big part of this conversation, and that is a huge draw also for families with children.
As I said, you're not a real, biggest draw here is school choice, correct?
Well, I want to thank you, because you've done, you know, I was there for 12 years. I know how hard it is to do what you did, so thank you.
Anybody else?
So, if this vote on the 18th doesn't pass, then what?
That's a good question, because, one, we would be arguing against a merger, very vehemently arguing against the merger, because in our opinion, it's not in the best interest of Vernon to do that. And quite honestly, I think it would be detrimental to the other four towns, because we would be stopping them from proceeding with what they want and need to do. So, I think it would be very, very difficult for us, and I think what could happen was, as the lady here alluded to, this is a small crowd tonight. One of the things that we did is, we put this meeting and the vote in July, so that the rest of the folks can move forward, knowing that this is a very risky time to have a vote, because it's going to be a very small turnout. So, I think what could happen is, if the vote were to fail, we had a very successful vote. If this vote were to fail, there could be a petition to the Board to have a revote, and that would take place probably more in September, which would really mess everything up for everybody. But I think that would be what I would lobby for. Of course, the rest of the Board would have to concur with that, but that would be a way of moving forward, but it would be a very, very harmful issue for the entire process. We've worked out with our friends and neighbors a solution. We've worked out with the state, a solution that's in the best interest of Vermont. The former superintendent thought it was in the best interest of Vernon, the state of Vermont. The state of Vermont thinks it's in the best interest of Vernon. The lead attorney for the Agency of Education, best interest of Vernon. The Secretary of Education, best interest of Vernon. That's why I'm pretty sure that if we vote out, we will be very successful in getting a side-by-side because no one's told us, we can't do that. They've all said, this is your best, if you want to keep what you have in Vernon, this is the best way to do it. So we're following their recommendation.
One final comment. I don't know if there's a way we can get this information like to people's hands that are not here. I am so glad, I have to tell you, I am so glad that I came because I was going to vote against it, you know? And I am very, very thankful. Thank you.
By the way, this session has been recorded by BCTV. It'll be on BCTV Channel 10 and online, brattleborotv.org. Tell your friends.
Also tell your friends that if they have questions and concerns, come on the 17th. We have another informational session. And we don't care if you have 400 people show up and every one of them wants to ask a question. We want people to be as informed as possible when they make this choice. It's not a small decision to make. But as you said, without proper information, there's a lot of supposition. A lot of people are assuming things that are just not there. One being that the Board is only talking about what's positive. We're talking about what's positive because that's all we know for real. The other stuff is all what-if, 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 what-if. And Carrie is correct, there are potential benefits to that merger, but we don't even know if the merger's going to take place. So we need to take this step to keep the process moving forward. And as Sandy said, it's really like little intersections. We've got to stop at every intersection and pass every, every step of the way to make the process work.
Well, I think it's important that you let people know that our teachers are not going to lose anything. Our staff, people other than the teachers, aren't going to lose anything. And the kids are going to keep the services that they ask. And that's important because I've had feedback from people wondering what will happen with the teachers, what will happen with the kids that need help. And so I think it's important that the Board gets that out there.
And it's very understandable, a lot of those concerns.
Rumors going around that, you know, we're going to lose our funding from the state because we're pulling out even the things that are going on out, you know? And I said, I'm so glad I came or could come because I was ready to vote or no.
But if we put more of this information out, it's going to look like we're really trying to sell it. And it's just really trying to tell people, this is the reality of what it is, you know? So it's really tricky. Mike's met with teachers and, you know, we've tried to reassure people that it isn't going to have a negative impact, but it's still being said out there, so I'm worried it's hard.
I agree with you that you had mentioned people feeling that it was very one-sided information, and myself included. Like, I'm feeling that way as well as a lot of people that I've talked to. So I think it would be very beneficial to get that information out another way. I know it's going to be on BCTV, but, you know, like, there was a flyer that went out. If you could do something else that's a little more informative. Like, I had no idea that things would stay the same if we were to do this side-by-side. I haven't even heard this side-by-side merger thing at all. So if that information is put out there to people in a clear way, positives and negatives of this side, positives and negatives of this side, whatever you know, that will make people feel more like it's not so one-sided.
Question for you. Do you think Facebook would be a good thing for the Board to put this information on? Or is there a medium that we should do that with?
There are a lot of people on Facebook that are reading things. That's a good place, but, yeah.
I'll tell you, I'll try, Carrie, we'll try to do something. But I got to tell you, I am not a techie. Here's my story on Facebook. One day, my granddaughter, I said, I want to meet up with a friend. She said, get on Facebook, you'll find him. Went on Facebook. And a couple of days later, I get this thing somebody wrote on my wall. And I actually said to her, wow, I think somebody wrote on the house. I thought it was a wall. And she said, no. When it comes to that stuff, I don't know.
I'm looking for a loaded cellphone.
Back in the room?
You know, I think that's where it's hard for so many people of my generation because I don't really think that Facebook is a place where this conversation should be taking place, although it did all day long today. There's a lot of misinformation out there because of Facebook. So the question I was going to ask is, Tim, on the Vernon-Vermont page, can you put a link? And I don't know if you, I don't know if this is doable because I'm like Mike, except for I knew it was a wall and not a house.
It's very doable. Once the BCTV people have the thing edited and ready to go, we will put a link there.
And that would be awesome because that does reach a lot of people. I didn't either, that's why I was asking. I wasn't just...
I mean, I think that we need to share what the plan is, like the Act 49, the side-by, all that sort of thing. And I think that clears up a lot of people's, well, clear up a lot of people's concerns. They have an idea what the plan is. It's super scary to, you know, make a move and what's it cost? And that's, I think, what we were feeling, that we had no, I think it was a risk, kind of thing.
Well, the biggest thing is to approach change with no information. That's scary.
Over the corner?
But also, this flyer went out to every household, right?
Yes.
And look how many showed up. I mean, it's not as if they didn't know about the meeting, but they at least have information. And maybe if there's a summary of a flyer that has a summary of the questions that were asked and the answers that were given, that might, and if that goes out, that might help.
The other problem is with the flyer, it's all, yeah. It is expensive.
So I would encourage you all to just encourage other people to come. We're going to do this again next week. I'm sure you won't want to come again. But just encourage people if they have questions to come because it is hard to put in a succinct way all of the information because it's complicated. It's not, it's not easy to explain it or understand it.
I think I would also encourage people to watch the 15 minutes, the first 15 minutes of this meeting when Mike explained Act 49. I think that was really powerful and will help people understand.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. And again, there will be another similar meeting next Monday, the 17th, beginning at 6:00 PM. And you also can vote early if you wish by stopping by the clerk's office to cast a ballot. The election is 7 to 7 on Tuesday, July 18.